Good evening and welcome to the regular Rosemont City Council meeting. Today is Monday, January thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First of all, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
So with no changes, modifications, anyone wish to move a motion?
So move the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, the agenda's adopted. Well, we do not have any presentations tonight, so we'll move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time may come to the podium, state their name, and ask a question. And I'm looking, do we have anyone online?
Nobody at this time, there.
And we have no one here, so if there are no questions or comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First of all, are there any items any council member like to pull?
I'd like to pull K.
Anyone else? If not, go ahead.
Move the consent agendas items six A through O with K removed.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Weisensel, second, council member Freski. No comments? Please take the roll.
Weisensel? Block?
Aye.
Trustee?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Motion carries five zero, will now move to six K, which is an amendment to the two thousand and twenty-two fee and fees policy, Parks and Recreation Commission, or Recreation Committee. With that, I'll turn over to our director, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I think council member Essler had some questions, so I think maybe if he asks his questions first, then I can definitely try and respond.
Yep. Yeah, my question is really around primarily the Assembly Hall, looking at the pricing, and I know this was the one facility that wasn't on the list last time. So my question, I know in the notes here, it said the, on Saturday, it's eighty percent used, the Assembly Hall. What's the Friday?
The Friday right now is about fifty-five to sixty percent. And it's early in the year, so we'll pick up more Fridays as we go throughout the year. We'll probably end up at about seventy percent. I know one of the things that we do with scheduling is we work closely with the Arts Council to try and keep those real popular months, like June and July, available for rentals. And I can just tell you that looking at our calendar for two thousand and twenty-two, RAC does not have any events on a Friday or a Saturday in June or July. We have every Saturday in June and July booked with either a graduation party, an anniversary party, a wedding, or a wedding rehearsal, like on a Friday night. And so definitely Saturdays are the most popular. Fridays are probably a close second. And then we're even getting a lot of activity on Sundays. People like that shorter Sunday afternoon event time. They don't have to book it for the whole day because in the Assembly Hall, we have every Sunday booked by Community on a Hill Church. And so every Sunday, I think it's from seven-thirty to twelve-thirty, that's automatically already in use. So people who want to book an event on a Sunday only have to book it from like two o'clock until ten o'clock. So they get a little cheaper price for that kind of event. But our activity use in that space on the weekends has really picked up over the last year and a half since, you know, obviously with COVID shutting a lot of things down. We've seen a great rebound, and we're real happy with our numbers. We think we'll probably get to close to ninety percent on Saturdays this year in filling those in. We do have a couple Saturdays where they're on holidays, so that might play into what we're doing. You know, the Arts Council does have a handful of Saturdays, but the majority of those real prime time events are set aside for the city. I think it was probably two, maybe three years ago when we talked about this at a goal setting, was trying to work with RAC, still allowing them to have access to the space, but trying to negotiate with them to really try to prioritize those high rental periods. And they've been great to work with. They've done that. They've set up, you know, they do like a play in February where we're not getting a lot of, you know, we're not as busy in February. And so they've chosen to run some of their events in February, and that works out great with us. If we only have to fill maybe two weekends in February versus four weekends, that's not a bad thing for us right now. One of the goals we also have is to make sure that facility does get used. And so that's happening right now with both between the city, running some events with RAC, and then obviously with a lot of private rentals.
Well, and I guess really, maybe the one reason I'm asking the question is, right now, the rates proposed, the Friday and Saturday rates are exactly the same. And I'm just wondering if there's not an opportunity, I'm thinking like weddings.
Yep.
If there was an opportunity where if somebody did have a Friday wedding as opposed to a Saturday, and it was available, but it was at a cheaper rate, would that get them to take a Friday versus a Saturday?
It might. People oftentimes are looking for Fridays for specific reasons, that the date works better, or there's a special reason they want to be on a Friday versus a Saturday. It potentially could. I mean, that would theoretically make sense to have it be a little bit less.
Again, I'm just looking at.
To attract a proposed event on Friday night.
If we want to get more revenue coming in on Friday nights versus Saturday, if we give them some enticement for somebody to use a Friday night instead of a Saturday? Because especially in the summer, I would imagine your Saturdays are pretty high demand. But on Fridays, if there's some extra motivation to get somebody to slide to a Friday versus a Saturday?
Yep.
And I don't know if price would do that or not.
I think it probably would. I think we could probably look at, you know, maybe a twenty percent decrease on a Friday, if that makes sense. We can work that into the fees as we go through and set these.
I mean, it's up to you guys to discuss, but I just wanted to throw it out there as a question, if council felt like that that would be something, again, I mean, my understanding right now is we're not a break even or above on the Steeple Center. So knowing that we're subsidizing some of the operations, if there's an opportunity to increase revenue to help.
Sure.
Bring that a little bit closer to break even.
Yep.
I think we should look at some opportunities there.
Okay.
Just curious, along this line, how do you measure usage? Is it on an eight-hour day, a twelve-hour day?
It depends on, I'm looking at the fee schedule, and it depends on the room we're talking about. We have blocks that we rent out. So we have, like on a Friday, let me get the technology working here for me, so I can actually read this. All right. So on Fridays, we have it broken into a six-hour rental block or a full-day rental block. Saturday is just a full-day rental, and then Sunday is a two to nine P.M. That's just for the Assembly Hall. And then for some of the other spaces that we rent, we do a lot of, typically when someone rents the Assembly Hall for a wedding reception or anniversary party or something like that, they also rent other adjoining rooms for the bride to get ready, or the groomsmen to kind of be away from everybody. And so typically, there's three or four rooms that are rented out at any given event. Those other rooms are all done on like three hours blocks, so they can rent that less. You know, if they don't need it for the whole day, we'll give it to them just for a shorter period of time. But the Assembly Hall is the big one that is done mainly with six-hour and full-day rentals. And then we track all this. I think one of the things we talked about at our goal setting was that we purchased a new recreation reservation and registration software this year, which has way more capabilities than our old software system used to have. And so we have the ability to track all kinds of information. So the metrics that we can now research and track are much greater than what they used to be. So that's going to be a great tool for our staff to be able to look that up. Before, I know we had to do a lot of hand counting through calendars, and it took a long time to do that. But now with this new software, we're going to be able to do that a lot easier.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and one last comment. I mean, I want to be careful that I don't maybe make the recommendation to do a twenty percent reduction on Friday night, and then you just lose that twenty percent. I mean, I think the goal will be then, okay, now what do we do with, how are we armed with that information? Because in theory, we got to go get twenty percent more nights rented to at least be the same financially. So I, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I think what I'm interested in myself is just how do we get our revenue? You know, what do we do for revenue opportunities at the Steeple Center? And that's what I think we should be looking at.
Okay.
I just have one question.
Yes.
On Friday for Assembly Hall for the six-hour minimum rental, it has resident at six hundred and non-resident at four twenty. I'm wondering if that six hundred is supposed to be a three hundred?
That was actually updated. Do you have a paper?
I have it electronically.
Electronic copy? Mine says three hundred.
Should be three and four twenty, right? Resident is three and non-resident is four twenty?
Okay.
Yeah. I know I talked to Aaron late on Friday, we noticed it was six hundred.
Okay. As long as you know that, we're good.
She updated it to be three hundred.
Perfect.
And just so I'm understanding, are we, because one of the things that jumped out to me, councilman Essler, as you're talking, is, you know, the six-hour minimum is maybe the chance to save a bit of money or realize a bit of a cost savings on a Friday night. So thinking that that, these rates are good enough, and instead the focus is on marketing and booking, or do we want to explore some Friday night revenue reduc-, or price reductions?
I mean, it's already less than fifty percent of a Saturday.
If you do the six hour, the full day is the same, and so the only, I guess.
The full-day rental would be the same. If you have a wedding on a Friday, you, I mean, are you just charging a six-day, six-hour rental then for a wedding on a Friday?
We do see a lot of six-hour rentals on Fridays because a lot of times, the space is already used during the day in the morning, or they can't get access to the other rooms, room one hundred, two hundred, two oh one, or two oh two, because there's programming on Fridays. So typically, you'll see people looking for a Friday night, they only want the six-hour event, they come in a little later, they go till close, and they only pay the three hundred.
So in that case, they are getting quite a bit of a discount from what they're on Saturday already?
Yep.
Yeah, I, then the rate's probably fine if a lot of the Friday weddings aren't full-day rentals.
Most of them are not. Yep. There, you know, occasionally, someone will get in on a day where there's maybe not a full slate of activities, and they'll want that full day. But we see a lot of people do their rehearsal dinners, their wedding rehearsals on Friday, and pictures, not the wedding pictures, but just fun pictures of the group, and they'll do that on Saturday, or, excuse me, on a Friday for just the six hours.
All right, here's maybe the question I should ask is, how many full-day rentals on Friday do we do right now?
We probably have a total of, well, I can actually tell you. We've got, here, four.
Over the course of the year?
Yep, right now, full days on Fri-, three full days on Fridays. We've got several wedding rehearsals.
Well, as you guys think about, as you guys think about it, then what I would suggest is what, it's somewhere probably between three hundred and seven hundred, or up to seven hundred on the full-day rental. But what would trip somebody to just take the full day Friday as opposed to just trying to squeeze it into six hours? I guess that's what it comes down to.
Yeah. I see what you're saying. Yeah, I would say somewhere probably around like maybe a five fifty, or, you know, in that ballpark for like a resident.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to get knee-deep into this, but again, at the end of the day, it's driving revenue, like what are we doing to drive the revenue?
Our big drivers right now are trying to sell those six-hour rentals because we just have such a conflict with full-day rentals right now on the Fridays. And that's, and that's why we don't even offer a full-day rental in the Assembly Hall on Sundays, because we know we always have that conflict with the church in the mornings. And so that's why we only offer them that.
Things, they would know far enough advance where you would be able to not book things then for Friday mornings. I mean, if you could get more to take a full-day rental.
Yep.
So.
I have a question, council member Weisensel.
Just a comment, I would, I don't have a problem with the numbers in the ask here. What I, I guess the challenge, I think, is just simply marketing and letting staff go out there and try to drive that revenue, whether it's through advertising, marketing, whatever, and see what we pull in, and then be able to evaluate that. Certainly with the new hardware, software sheets and stuff, you might be able to look at that quarterly a little easier than what has been in the past. So I'd leave it to staff. I'd prefer to that than try to micro-manage the numbers here.
Agree a hundred percent. Yep, agree. I mean, so maybe this is kind of the list rate, and then as you're out there promoting it, it's like, hey, you know what? We can give you a deal. I mean, leave it to you guys to do that.
We can report back in June after we've had six months to kind of work through some of our rentals.
Yep.
You know, Saturdays always go first, and then we start getting those people who kind of call at the last minute and say, getting married in three months, do you got a Friday I can get? We're like, yeah, we can get you a six-hour, and they take it like that. I know right now, we probably have about six or seven rehearsals on the books already, where people are just coming in, you know, and a lot of times, they don't even take a full, they don't even use the full six hours sometimes. They don't get there till seven o'clock, and they're out of there by ten o'clock. But they want to have plenty of time in case they do get there. But yeah, why don't we plan to stop back in June?
Yeah.
End of June, and report back kind of where we're at, where we're looking at our numbers. We can look at what kind of rentals we're getting, if there's any full days, you know, what the rehearsal numbers look like, and we can report that back, and we can adjust these as necessary.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. With that.
Motion to approve a resolution to amend the two thousand and twenty-two fees and fee policy to change rates for the Steeple Center.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, council member Essler, second, council member Freski. Any final comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Block?
Aye.
Trustee?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Motion carries five zero, and that concludes all items on the consent agenda. We do not have any public hearings or unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. We have one item, which is to authorize entry into a contract, construction management services for the Police and Public Works project. With that, I'll turn over our city administrator, Mr. Martin.
Members of the council, pleased to be back in front of you tonight to memorialize a decision that the city council made a couple weeks ago, and more or less using this chance tonight for our project team here to chat about the fact that the Public Works and Police Campus Project is really kicking into high gear. And we just continue to shine a light on that and want to help make sure the public is aware of it, and certainly our staff is aware of it and very excited about it as it moves forward. So if you recall back in December, staff supported, or excuse me, the council supported staff's recommendation to accept the proposals that we received through our bidding process for the city's construction manager, who will help us guide and really direct the construction and design phase of the Police and Public Works Campus Project. And so in front of you tonight is a contract with Kraus Andersen, and the amount of one point two six million dollars to serve as the city's construction manager over the next, call it eighteen to twenty-four months of designing and constructing this facility. And as the council will recall, really what the construction manager does is serves, wears a number of hats, project manager, maybe of folks that aren't inside the industry would almost consider it as like a general contractor as well. So Kraus Andersen will be the construction trailer that folks will see out on the property. It will have the appearance and be managed as a Kraus Andersen construction site. But what we'll do in the construction manager form of a contract is really bid out all the subsections and the subcomponents of all the work. So there will be a standalone publicly bid process for the masonry, and the painting, and the tile, and the countertops, and et cetera. Kraus Andersen will take a significant amount of pressure off the project management team of Chief Dolstrom, Public Works Director Egger, and myself to really spearhead and quarterback a lot of those facilities, or a lot of those prospects and projects and subcomponents of the construction of this facility, and allow us to really continue doing the other important parts of our tasks, our day-to-day tasks in our regular job. And so I'm really excited about the partnership and the relationship that we've already developed with Kraus Andersen. We've met with them probably already ten times in the, since December, and we've been kind of operating without a contract, and that's pretty normal here as we just kind of finish out, finish out the contract. Just a bit of an update as well on where the project is at. We have the RFP out right now for architects. That closes next week Thursday. We'll review them maybe Friday, I forget. We review, and then we'll interview the following Thursday, February tenth. We will interview architects, and I'll be back with, in front of you, probably early to mid-March with an architect contract. And then really kick into high gear at that point, we'll develop a design committee formed by subject matter experts throughout Police and Public Works, have the chance to go tour other facilities that are of interest, both the facilities that Kraus Andersen has built, facilities that are potential future, our future architect will have built, and others to just kind of borrow best practices from other facilities. I know Nick and the chief have already been on tours and just within their professional organizations, and just as we get out and about, meeting with colleagues, and so we all have a list of ideas and a wish list and a hope list already, as does staff. And it'll be really a fun process, too, to have mechanics, for example, really, you know, get in deep on what the mechanics bay needs, and the detectives, what does a detective room need, or what does a holding cell need, just all those really cool components. So we're really excited, as you can tell, to get this kicked off, and staff is really excited, too. And so again, Kraus Andersen, for example, helped us pull together the RFP for the architect process. They'll be at the interview table with us as we interview architects. It'll be our decision, but they're able to tell us, I've worked with that person, I've worked with that person, here's their strengths, here's their weaknesses, and they're already doing that and guiding that. So their benefit and their value add is already being felt, and so very much appreciate the council's support in bringing them on early. And we can already tell, like I said, the benefit of they're going to sit at the table as we design things, because I think often, as much as we enjoy and have fun with our architect partners and kind of dreaming big, Kraus Andersen can tell us that that sounds real neat, but you're not going to want to build it, or you're not going to want to maintain it. And so having them at the table with us as we go and design is going to be really valuable. So again, I think I've talked this one probably at length here, but I wanted to take just a couple of minutes, so for the folks tuning in, and I actually spoke with one of our local reporters today, who hopefully wrote a story about this, which would be great, just we're trying to continue to share the word that we're rolling on this. And this is a project, and it came up last week during council's goal-setting session. And again, appreciate the council's continued support of this much-needed project. So with that, you've got a contract in front of you tonight that's been vetted by our attorney. It uses the AIA template, which is very broadly used in construction, but we made a number of tweaks to it to make sure that Ms. Tejin was feeling comfortable, and she is. So with that, happy to stand for any questions the council may have.
Thank you. I'll open up, council member, for questions regarding this topic. Council member Weisensel.
So looking through the document, like you say, it's widely used. There are a couple things in here listed as to be determined, which I understand why. And that, what I'm interested most in is understanding how the council's going to be looped in, I guess. So the contractor will be reporting to you probably on a weekly, and I'm assuming council will see something probably monthly from them, basically on scope, schedule, and budget. How were you thinking on having that presented? Particularly now in the front end, once when the building starts happening, progress is really easy to watch and see. But during the design phase, how are you going to share that comfort level that we're making good progress and meeting milestones that are going to be laid out for us?
Mayor, members of the council, I think I would say that, you know, with a project of this scope, we'd likely have it updated probably just about every work session, just with how it's going. And then I would say, once the design subcommittees are really into a deeper phase with the architect, we'd want to bring a preliminary design back to you guys, you know, a number of times, I would imagine, to make sure that there's the support and confidence there with council on design phase. And as you mentioned, I think with construction phase, we'll bring back a monthly slate of change orders as they come. You know, we would expect every project has change orders. We've talked about that already with Kraus Andersen. So you'll have the chance to see change orders as they come as well, to just make sure that we're managing that scope and operating inside of that budget as well.
And as a follow-up, I just, was there plans to put a camera there so that residents can watch this on the website as it's going on?
Yeah, that was one of the really interesting selling points for our city team on the Kraus Andersen side, is that they develop a website. It might still be active for the Burnsville Fire Station. They did one where you could log in and see it on a daily basis, and then I think they did a weekly summary video, talking about, here's what happened at your facility this week, and so residents could log in and figure out, this week, we poured asphalt, or we poured, you know, tiles or whatever, or laid tiles. You can tell I'm not going to be building it, but, so, but a chance to log in and watch a video, you know? And so that was a cool sales pitch for Kraus Andersen, because it's going, it's on Biscayne, it's a busy, busy property, it's a lot of taxpayer dollars, and so folks are going to be excited about it, and they're going to want to know more.
Thank you.
Council member Block?
Piggybacking on taxpayers' dollars, can we give a little bit of detail about how this is being funded?
Yeah, I think the city has been planning for and saving for this project inside of its CIP. It continues to show up, as it's for a while been a future project in the CIP. I think the other part of it that assists in the funding of the project as well is because Public Works is inside of the facility, we're able to use some funds from our utility rate payers and our utility core funds, because the utility aspect of the Public Works Division will be housed inside of there, so we can have a small amount of the annual debt service paid for by the utility funds, which is, we've been planning for that fee impact as well. But I think maybe the shorter, more direct answer is, we'll be selling bonds, which is the city's form of getting a mortgage or a loan, twenty or twenty-five years, and pay it back over that time. And then that annual debt service payment will hit the budget, which ultimately hits the taxpayer. So we've been saving for it, we've got some money to apply towards it, but also it'll be a tax impact as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Council member Essler?
Yeah, just to follow up on your comment about, you know, expected change orders. I guess I would also ask, you know, as part of Kraus Andersen's work here with us, that, you know, they'd be very diligent that the change orders that they're bringing to us, bringing to staff, and ultimately you guys to us. to, that the change orders that they're bringing to us, bringing to staff and ultimately you, you guys to us are really for, you know, change in scope, uh, certainly change in scope warrants, uh, change orders. But I, I think that we, that, I guess who's going to be, who's going to be on our side, on the diligent side, making sure that we're not getting change orders for things that are not, not, not because of a change of scope?
Versus a change in product cost or labor cost or?
Labor schedule? I mean, I mean.
That's really K A, right? And, and so, and I've had the benefit of doing a project actually with Kraus Anderson before in another city. And, and I can tell you that there'll be a two-person team that will live inside of their construction trailer and it's their job to, to quarterback and control that, that team. And so if the bricklayer doesn't show up with enough guys and gals to lay brick that day, then he's out there in their face saying, you didn't bring enough staff today. It's too slow. You're behind schedule. What I, so that's a Kraus Anderson duty, um, to really, to really shepherd that.
But, but the reason I asked the question is I've, I've also, I, I know that there's owners that are a little bit more flexible and the two extremes are flexible owners with change orders and the other extreme is, is owners that are much more diligent and disciplined about change orders and really only approving change orders when they truly are for a change of scope and something that we as the owner are, are, are making the changes for. So I would just ask that when you're working with Kraus Anderson, just make sure that they, they understand.
I guess from, from my standpoint at least, that we're going to be more on the continuum of we're disciplined.
These are taxpayer dollars. These aren't private dollars. These are, these are public dollars that we're, we're spending here.
Well, right. And we've already had that conversation too, that yeah, there's a contingency. There's a couple of different areas of contingency across these budgets. But that is not a, a guaranteed spend out of that contingency, to your point, you know? And so, um, I, I would, I would hope that we could end the project with having contingency left over as a point of contingency, right? So a fair point and a, and a point well taken.
And we, and we control all the contingencies, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, it's our budget. At, at the end of the day, it's our budget.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, um, we're going to monitor contingency and how change orders are running as compared to contingency. And we've got to see how that's tracking and.
Yep, okay.
And trust that they're going to be for, forward with us that if things are looking not good, they got to tell us that and we got to change course and, and redesign or re-engineer stuff maybe midstream, but certainly hope to not have that happen. But we've talked about ad nauseam with them and with you guys about concerns with the bidding market right now and how that's going to look. And if that's maybe leveling out, maybe not, inflation is still extraordinary right now. And so, um, an interesting time to be out in the marketplace.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions, comments? If not, would anyone like to move a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to enter into contract with Kraus Anderson Construction Company to serve as the city's construction manager for the public works and police campus project.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor, Councilmember Block, second, Councilmember Fresky. Any final comments? And seeing none, please take the roll.
Trustee?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Block?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero and that concludes this item, all items under new business. We'll move on to announcements. City staff updates. I'll turn over Mr. Martin.
Uh, Mayor, I think I've got a, an empty list tonight, so I can throw it right back to you. So I appreciate that.
The surveys online, correct?
Yes, yeah. Did you want to make a comment on that or I can let folks?
Why don't you?
Sure. Uh, yeah, so we have the, uh, National Citizen Survey, which is the survey that we do every two years with, uh, uh, national polling company, um, under, they kind of operate under the umbrella of Poll Co. And residents have, have, uh, heard that name and will hear more of that name too. And that's a, an online digital monthly polling service or, or survey service that we use. And we're going to utilize a, a bunch more here in twenty twenty-two. But, um, we got the results back from our N C S survey. Um, this is a statistically significant survey. So we did a paper and an online survey and they continue to find additional results until we hit the necessary number to be deemed scientifically significant for a city of our size. And so we got right around six hundred responses and, and, uh, I'll, I'll come back in front of the council and, and community here at a future meeting and give a more detailed report. But, um, the, uh, and also I would turn, ask folks to turn to their newsletter, which at mailboxes here over the weekend and the next few days. We've got a nice story and then infographic in the newsletter that talks about, uh, the results of the survey. But, uh, ultimately, um, eighty-nine percent of the community said that Rosemount is an excellent or good place to live. We exceeded our national, um, comparables in over twenty categories. So quality of life, public safety, parks and trails, um, openness of community, sense of hometown feel, a number of, of boxes and, and categories that they track. We exceeded our national competitors. And that's really one of the cool things about the national community survey is that it compares us to cities across the nation of similar size. And so we can know, generally speaking, uh, a town of our size in, in another state, what should we expect to see for a result? And then if folks drill into the, the survey results on the, on the website, they can see how we trend, uh, towards our comparables. Are we similar? Are we higher? Are we lower? And, um, it's a, it's a, it's a good result across the board, um, which was really interesting to see. But I will, and, and reassuring. And I think one of the things we talked about and the mayor recorded a Rosemount Report video today and talked about this too, that, you know, it really validates the Money Magazine ranking that the city just saw as well to say, you know, um, that was not an outlier. We just, you know, that's Money Magazine. That's some of the metrics that they track. Now here, here we have a community survey where six hundred families responded to the survey and verified what Money Magazine, you know, just got done saying. So a really neat, uh, a neat thing to see and, and, um, I should add too, we use these folks, uh, in twenty eighteen as well. So now we have a benchmark from a previous Rosemount version of this survey with the same company in eighteen compared to twenty-one. And they can show us how we, we've changed, um, and in most areas improved since, since twenty eighteen. Um, a couple of areas were interesting of just, um, kind of commu- communication or connectedness to the community. Um, is, is a pandemic result shown kind of across the nation that folks are feeling a bit more isolated right now um, in, in, uh, just as a result of the pandemic. So that was an interesting thing to, to see the impact of. But, um, a really positive result and, uh, for anybody who's data minded, minded or interested in that stuff, would encourage, uh, you to look on the website. You can toggle through the tabs on the website and check that out. But, uh, we'll come back and do a full presentation about it, um, to the council for sure in a work session, um, as well.
I'm glad you explained that. It's much more detailed than I ever would have touched on. I would say two comments. People, we got real high marks, public safety and we have in the past and the ease of getting around on our trails and traffic, et cetera. I, and there is number one concern with residents, they want to see more retail, local shopping. We're well aware of that and we're excited, uh, with a lot of the growth and activity going on. We think that will happen soon out on the Akron Corridor. So just, uh, one comment, um, like Logan said though, you can go online, rosemountmn.org and read all the detail. Upcoming, uh, on the calendar, we have the Environmental and Sustainability Commission meets on Tuesday, February eighth, beginning at five thirty P M. Technology Task Force, they meet on Wednesday, February ninth, beginning at six thirty P M. And the next Port Authority and Council Meeting is on Tuesday, February fifteenth with the Port Authority, six P M. Council Meeting, seven P M. And if I do not see any other comments, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Most meetings adjourned.